Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Apologies for being tardy. Thank you all for having us. I do have a presentation that I believe Matthew Rothstein is able to share for us. We were dealing with some technical difficulty. Yay. Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate it. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you so much.
Would you like to come sit up here?
Oh, yeah. Okay, come on, somebody. Hi, hi. I will be joined by two of us, or three of us. Should they sit up here?
Yeah, there's, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Where did you want me to go?
You could come sit with Harry right up here. We just... Yeah, this is... Hello. All right. It looks like we're squared away. All right, there we go.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for having us. My name is Marina Delajanas, and I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Water Resources Department. I am joined here by some of my colleagues with the Middle Creek Project Committee. I am joined here by Dr. Lyons, who will be helping me present today, and then also Peter Windham. Both serve on the Middle Creek Restoration Project Committee. And we are here to bring your board, one, an update of the status and next steps for the Middle Creek Flood Damage Reduction and Ecosystem Restoration Project. It is a mouthful, so we will be calling it the Middle Creek Project. And then also, we will bring into the board for review and approval of the 2022 Letter of Intent from the non-federal sponsor. So, two items to you, but the first will be a presentation. So with that, next slide, please. All right. So just a very quick overview of our Middle Creek Project. Folks, I hope everyone is aware of it. So our Middle Creek Project is located in the Upper Lake area of our community. So it is near the Scotts Creek and the Middle... It's located in the Scotts Creek and the Middle Creek watersheds with the confluence of Scotts Creek and Middle Creek, two of the largest tributaries entering our lake. It makes up for 50% of our Clear Lake watershed. So the project area, as you can imagine, is a huge project area and has a large scope. So with these two watersheds, the Middle Creek and the Scotts Creek watershed, they provide 57% of the inflow and 71% of the phosphorus floating into Clear Lake. And the overall project goals is, one, to reduce flood risk in the Upper Lake community; two, water quality improvement; and three, habitat restoration. Next slide, please. So here is the Middle Creek Project timeline. As you can see, this project has been going on for a very long time. I'm not going to read this entire timeline for you all. I think my voice would get tired after a few of these key points here, but I would like to highlight a few key dates that have an important aspect of this project. So we'll start from the very beginning. And between 1918 and 1933, the levees were constructed in the project area by private interests. In 1983, the levees failed and the project area was evacuated. So the Army Corps of Engineers did come into the project area at 1958, so a while back after the levees were constructed. And then we also have a few other areas where the project was evacuated, again, 1986. In 1994, that was the first official public meeting from the community members regarding what is this project, what are the next steps of the project. In 1997, the Army Corps of Engineers did conduct a reconnaissance study, and it was completed and established that there was indeed federal interest in restoring the project area. And I'll be having my colleague, Dr. Lyons, here in a moment, tell you about the role of Army Corps with this exact project area. In 2002, the final feasibility report and environmental impact statement was completed. In 2004, the Army Corps completed the project management plan for reconstruction engineering design phase of the project. In 2018, the district was awarded funds from the Army Corps, or, excuse me, from the Department of Water Resources, their flood corridor program, for the acquisition of willing sellers, the parcels in this project area. In 2019, the Board of Supervisors elected to establish the Middle Creek Restoration Project Committee. Again, we are here on behalf of that committee to provide an update. And then 2020, we are utilizing the remaining funds that we have, which I will highlight here in a few slides over, for the acquisition of parcels in that project area from willing sellers. Awesome. Thank you. And then take it away, Dr. Lyons.
Good morning. The stakeholders and agencies involved are pictured here on this slide. And the most important is the first two, the Army Corps of Engineers and the County of Lake. The Army Corps of Engineers has two functions, and one is military, and the other is civil. Of course, we deal with the civil projects. They have a lot, huge backlog of civil projects. There's $109 billion, $109 billion of civil projects in the queue, and that's 15 times their annual budget. So right away, you see the first element involved is patience with working with them. But they are efficient, and they do an excellent job, both in their military aspects and in their civil aspects. What we've been doing, what this committee's been doing, and the coalition before and at the same time, is to make this project as attractive as possible so that it is competitive in the decisions that the Army Corps makes in terms of its annual work plan. And also, we've been in contact with our federal representatives so that when Congress becomes involved, that the shuttling of funds, that funds become available, that they're appropriated. So those are our main jobs with respect to the Army Corps. I wanted to tell you that one of the themes of my working in this project is that it is a project where the work is useful regardless of when it finishes. As far as we've come, can't be undone. So in buying the property and making these cultural and biological studies, those don't go away. Feasibility study that Peter's going to talk about a little bit needs to be updated, needs to be supplemented, but it is a ground floor, and quite a bit of it will not need to be changed. So just steel your patience with the knowledge that quite a bit of effort has already been made. And a lot of that effort has been made by the County of Lake. And so that second symbol there represents you folks as the heads of the watershed protection district. You are what's called the non-federal sponsors. And so the Corps, the Army Corps is the lead agency, but you are the non-federal sponsors. And there's some mathematics involved in those titles. The non-federal sponsor is responsible for about 35% of the cost of any project and civil projects with the Army Corps. And then Congress and other coffers that the Corps have available kick in, 65%. Standing next to that, over on the right, is Department of Water Resources. And they have been a supply of money for us, the non-federal sponsors, if I can say "us", very proud to be a citizen and a volunteer at the County of Lake. They have been a source of money for land acquisition. $15 million most recently through Cecilia Aguirre-Curry and the Department of Water Resources, and then before that, in previous years, $12 million. So we have some $27 million worth of input, mainly from the Department of Water Resources. As we move forward, Department of Water Resources loses its chance of serious liability. So the property is purchased, the idea of people being flooded, of agricultural operations being damaged gets reduced. So we move forward in terms of acquiring a functioning wetland, and at the same time, we reduce our liability. The purchase of the land does this, and as I mentioned before, it also makes us more attractive. We want the Corps to dance with us. We got to look cute. And one way of looking cute is by having the property purchased. There are six stages in any civil project with the Army Corps. And one of them is property acquisition, and we're going ahead on that. Another is reconnaissance. We've done that. And the third is a feasibility study. It has a lot to do with satisfying NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, and other agencies' requirements. And that is our next step. And the Department of Water Resources will help us with some funding and getting that ready as well. Very important are the native people for two reasons. One is, this is historically an area of great importance to them, and currently, an area of great importance to them. Secondly, they own property. Third, their input is seriously needed in making sure in the feasibility study and in the actual construction that cultural resources are not damaged. There is an amazing interest by the Army Corps, the Department of Water Resources, and the County of Lake of doing the right thing in terms of cultural resources. And we, one of the requirements in the next year or so is a, in the feasibility, finishing the feasibility study, is to get an agreement where different agencies involved agree to do that right thing, to satisfy the state historical preservation officer and the national requirements. The last symbol represents the Middle Creek Restoration Coalition. This is the group of 125 people or so who have voiced interest. Can I, next slide? So this is the dots that represent some of the folks that have signed on to the coalition. And you can see they're all around the county. It's a general agreement among people in all the towns in Lake County that this project is a good idea, whether you live along the lake or not. There's been estimates that it would reduce the nutrient input into Clear Lake by about 10%, immediately, and then eventually, maybe 30%. So it's the keystone of the total maximum daily load program that's promulgated by the water boards. It is a main event that is approved by the Blue Ribbon Committee. They have endorsed this plan. So both citizens and agencies see it as a very positive thing. When I meet people in the coalition, or people on the street who are just interested in the project, they always say, "Well, you must be towards the beginning of the end on this project." And I smile, and I say, "No, we are kind of at the end of the beginning." And I smile broadly because I'm very proud that we're there, because I realize how much work done by almost everybody in this room to get us there. And it's, the Army Corps projects require a great deal of patience and a lot of push, political push, and so we've done quite a lot of pushing, and we'll keep at it. I wanted to mention, the letter of intent that we are about to ask you to sign is an annual reminder to the Corps that we are keenly interested in getting this done. There was also a letter sent to Mike Thompson to urge him to put us on the list of priorities for the 5th Congressional District in the reauthorization of the Water Resources Development Act. This is where the big money comes from. So Mike Thompson will keep pushing for us, and at some point, he will tell us, "It's time to go to Padilla and Feinstein." So we work with the House first, then we move to the Senate, and we keep pushing for appropriation. I wanted to turn to Peter if he has anything more to say about the coalition. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Harry. I'd just like to say just a couple of things about the coalition. First of all, we're very proud of the work that we have done and will continue to do for this project. Now, the coalition came together in 2016. That's six years ago. At that point in time, this project was dead. There was not activity on this project for several years. The Army Corps wrote a letter to you asking whether or not you really were intending to move ahead with this project, and that was the, and there was no money. And so we got together, we read with, as Harry says, a group of people, created this organization. And the wonderful thing about an organization like that is everybody wants to participate because there's nobody who ever says no. Why should they? It's a wonderful project. And so in meeting with county staff, we held a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers in Sacramento. The Congressman Garamendi's representative was there, about six people from the Army Corps. Harry and I were there. Then director of the, here from the county, was in that presentation. And we made a presentation that this is alive, this is important, and this project needs to go forward. The message to us, obviously, was money. What do we need? We need money. So that became, and is still, our number-one objective, is to get money for this project because no money, no project. And so Will Evans, who was then in this department, told us that DWR had money left over from bond issues that they were trying to figure out what to do with. And there were a number of organizations, you know, entities that were interested. So the question was, could we get it? And how staff came up with this long report about identifying 70 parcels, there are actually 70 parcels that have ultimately been required, some not even on this map yet, because they're outside, across Highway 20 and other locations who identified those parcels, and that it would take about $15 million at that point in time with the estimates to acquire them. So we approached, in particular, Val Nixon, who was the president, is the president of the coalition, approached Cecilia Aguirre and said, "Can you help us get this money? Can you help us get this money?" And she responded, and wonderfully, as a representative. So anyway, and then she, and she, and we wrote letters to the head of DWR, she did, and we got that $15 million, thanks to Cecilia, but it began with this coalition. That's where it began. And so now, our next, after getting the Army Corps engaged again, and Cecilia, and Senator McGuire is anxious to participate, we got Congressman Garamendi's office involved, of course, keeping Mike Thompson appraised, and so forth. We're after money. That's our job, is get money. We got the $15 million. In a sense, what we, our number-one worry, which we wish were not a worry, is, is that $15 million going to be spent in the deadlines that are given under the contract? Are these properties going to be acquired? And we're desperately concerned about that. And we never thought we would be in a position to be telling you, "Hey, guys, we're in trouble when it comes to spending these money and buying this property." We thought we'd be over to the Corps and end just Congress and getting more money. So, anyway, that's a quick summary. We're committed and thrilled about this project. We always have been. We appreciate, we appreciate the work that has been done by you supervisors, and particularly, you Supervisor Crandall and you Supervisor Sabatier. Your work has just been indispensable. We would not even be where we are now but for the fact that you took it and are providing that leadership. The same is for staff. Marina Delajanas and Daniela Santana, Cecilia Hoberg, and before them, Eric Seeley and Will Evans. You've had staff members that have been outstanding and worked, and we so appreciate what they do. So, anyway, that's the perspective from the coalition. And thank you.
Next slide, please. And then I'm going to pass it back over to Peter just to do a brief update or an overview of the tentative project design.
Is there a way I can point to things on that, or can I just walk up there? Yeah, thank you.
One of the pointers has a red dot on it. I don't know which one.
Yeah, that, there is one on there. Sam knows.
To be on the Academy Awards or something like that with this fancy stuff. The orange, pardon me. Thank you very much.
Long as Will Smith's not here.
Okay. Let's see. There we go. Yes, there it is.
There we go.
It comes and goes. The blue lines, let me just comment, of course, everything that you see surrounded by the dark line is the project area. It's about 1,650 acres. It's huge. By the way, this thing is huge. You have to go out there and walk on those levees to appreciate how enormous it is. This is an enormous project. The blue lines are the ancient channels that went through this area and that are to be restored. And they will come out, see if I can get, let me just point. Right here is, this is, by the way, this is Rodman Slough, where it comes out, catches Middle Creek and Scotts Creek, comes down, and this is Rodman Slough that comes out to the lake. This is the historic outlet for the water through this area. And this area was called Robinson Lake. What you see here, these little speckled blue areas, that's below Zero Rumsey. It's below Zero Rumsey. So it gives you an idea how far down this area is. It's not just keeping Scotts and Middle Creek out, it's keeping part of Clear Lake out of this whole area. So when the levees come down, this becomes open water again, has exactly the same level as Clear Lake. And so as you go up with this key here, as the lake, moving above Zero Rumsey, you get into these speckled areas that will be toolies and wetlands. You will, and then further up in the yellow are little highlands area. There's Bloody Island. Let's see if I can get that highlighted. That spot right there is Bloody Island. And so it's an enormous project. What the Corps will do is that they will come through first and rebuild all this inside, knock down old levees that you see internally, because this is rice land right now. And then they will breach these levees in various locations, levy breach, there'll be a breach here, there'll be breaches here, there are breaches up on that side. And anyway, so it'll get restored. And then it will act as a filter, which is what it's supposed to do. Scotts Creek and Middle Creek, instead of all coming down, Rodman Slough is going to come down through these blue channels. And there's where the phosphorus gets dropped out of the water. That's phosphorus that feeds the blue-green algae, as we all know. And then in terms of what, for that, my little, not big passion, is the Clear Lake hitch. And the hitches are in extremely terrible trouble. Right now, the numbers are so, drop so low that they're predicting that if they would stayed on the same trajectory, that they could be extinct within the matter of just a few years. The hitch, as you know, is listed as an endangered species by California. There's a petition sent before the federal government to list that was declined two months before the administration changed, and the suit's been brought. There's a pretty good likelihood that that may be actually reversed. If it becomes listed, it has an enormous impact on the county and these areas. So anyway, it's really a pretty map. I love it. If you can get your hands on it, there's a vast amount of information. And up there, let me just point, one last thing. Again, right up there, well, once again, see the part across the purple line? That's Highway 20, by the way. On that side, there's property there that needs to be acquired or flow easements that need to be acquired. They're not even on the list that we're talking, it's on the list of 70 parcels that was put together in-house, but in terms of the ones that are being focused on right now, they're not even there. There are a couple down here, too, that have to be some interest acquired. So anyway, that's the project, and happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
And then we'll go over to the next slide, please.
Just wanted to add that that map is also based on the 100-year flood. That way, we can make sure and acquire the properties or prevent any damage to other properties once levees are down, because right now, the levees is what protects 100-year floods from being able to access those properties.
Thank you for that. All right. So the Middle Creek Project Committee. As stated earlier in the presentation, the Middle Creek Project Committee was established in 2019. This is a board-appointed committee, and members of that committee include Supervisor E.J. Crandall, who serves as the chair, Supervisor Bruno Sabatier, who serves as the vice-chair, myself, and then also the Director of Water Resources and Public Works, Scott DeLeon, Dr. Harry Lyons, and then Peter Windham. So this committee, what our vision is, is the committee's vision is a completed project that protects persons and wildlife and improves water quality of Clear Lake and creates a recreation area for the residents and visitors to Lake County. So some of the highlights that the project has been able to accomplish since its formation was, again, we had a field visit, this is pre-pandemic, with the members of the Army Corps of Engineers to the project area, also folks from Garamendi's office and Congressman Garamendi himself, and then Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguirre-Curry. We were able to bring them out to the project site. As you can see, there's a picture here from that, from that visit, again, pre-pandemic, good times, and we were able to bring them out to the project site, get hands on and actually see what we were talking about. So as we've seen from this presentation, this is a big project, there's lots of going on. So it's really nice to be able to get out there and actually see the work that is being done, and just the project boundaries in itself. Other accomplishments that the committee has been able to achieve since its formation is, again, writing and sending over letters of intense, letters of support, and again, just ensuring that we are maintaining momentum for this project to achieve and accomplish the project at hand. Next slide, please. So we are, this is a public meeting format that we have. So our Middle Creek Project meetings meet now on a bi-monthly basis. Our next meeting takes place Monday, June 6, at 10:30 a.m. via Zoom. So every other month, we will meet on the first Monday of that month at 10:30 a.m. via Zoom. We've had these meetings since its formation via Zoom due to the pandemic, so hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to meet again, safe and sound, in person. If you have any questions on this, all this information can be found on the Water Resources website. All the meeting materials, minutes, recordings are on our Water Resources website and on the Water Resources YouTube page. And you can always give us a call at waterresources@707-263-2344, or send us an email at water/resources@lakecountyca.gov if you're interested in having anything on the agenda item or following along with that committee. Next slide, please. So I'm going to try and wrap up these next few slides very quickly, as I'm sure there's going to be lots of questions that we may have. So as stated, we have one source of funding right now, the main source that we've been working on, is our grant funds that we have been awarded by the California Department of Water Resources. This is through their flood corridor program. This is also the second grant of the same nature that we have received from DWR. And these funds are used entirely for the acquisition of parcels from willing sellers. That is a key word there. These funds that we are using, as Peter gave a brief update on, is for the acquisition of willing sellers. And we have these funds broken down into different tasks. So Task 1, funds allocated towards administration. Task 2 is groundwork. Task 3, acquisition, again, that is our biggest focus right now. Task 4, hydraulic mitigation of U.S. trust lands, and Task 5, which is maintenance trust funds. So next slide, please. Here is a breakdown of the funds that we have been able to utilize to date. As, I want to highlight again something that Dr. Lyons said is patience, right? So this entire process takes time. We are actively working on utilizing these funds, and we're really, really hitting the final hour now. As these funds, we were able to receive an extension from the state, thanks to the efforts of the Board of Supervisors, the coalition, and then also just county staff as well. So the main focus of our funds right now are acquisitions costs. With that, I do have, I do have the steps of how we need to acquire these parcels. Again, since these funds are being worked through the California Department of Water Resources, we have to check with them every step of the way. So as you can imagine, that does take time. We also have been utilizing a lot of funds from administration as well, and this is able to pay for our staff time that we are actively working on this project. And then another area that I would like to focus, that we are seeing a lot of funds to be worked on now, is the groundwork. So doing any... doing any of the demolitions of the acquired appraisals cleanup, um, any spill response, debris, vegetation, et cetera, in that project area to make sure that we can maintain this project. So when we are actually able to get boots on the ground and do, be shovel-ready, that are, um, that entire area is ready to do just that. So this is a breakdown as of February 7th. This has been modified slightly since then, as we have seen some appraisals, um, going through the process now, and a lot of, um, efforts have been made from Water Resources staff. So I want to commend them on their efforts for debris cleanup in that area. Next slide, please. Thank you. All right, so again, our biggest focus right now is parcel acquisition. So I have a map here on the left, and this map can be seen in real time on the Water Resources website. I have the link over here on the right. So our staff work very hard to update this map once we are actually to acquire these parcels. So you can see the gray, the gray, um, parcels are the ones that are acquired, and then the green and the blue parcels, those are just broken down into the two different consultants that we have working on the parcel acquisition. So these are the priority parcels that we're working on. As Peter had said earlier, there are more parcels in the project area, um, that are outside the project area that are not in contracts right now, because the ones that are actually, the parcels in the actual project area are our priority. So again, we are acquiring parcels from willing sellers. If there are not willing sellers, we as a committee have talked about different routes that we could take. That is still in discussion. So our focus right now, since we have grant funding that will be sunsetting soon, is to acquire those parcels. I'm not going to read step 1 through 17 here on the right. Um, and what is not in there is steps, sub, substeps, subtasks that are associated with steps 1 through 17. This is the route that we at the county have to follow as required by the California Department of Water Resources. When we acquire these parcels, it takes a lot of collaboration and communication amongst our consultants, our stakeholders, and then also just, of course, the, uh, the parcel owners, and making sure that everything is squared away with DWR so we can successfully acquire these parcels. Next slide, please. So some of our next steps, again, is just continue to secure project funding. We have a few sources of funding, but again, our biggest source right now that we're working with is the fund, the funds that we have from DWR. Continue with land acquisitions. This is our biggest priority, because we can't get this project done until we acquire all of the parcels. And as we can see, that does take time, but we're working diligently and getting, and continue on with that route. And then, of course, just continue conversations with a variety of stakeholders, including the tribes, PG&E, Caltrans, and Army Corps. So there's a lot of hands in this pot of soup that we are making for this project. Um, and again, just continuing to make sure that everyone is on the same page. We have a close collaboration, because it does make, take all of us to work together to successfully complete this project. Now, over here on the right is the 2022 non-federal sponsor letter of intent to the Army Corps of Engineers. Dr. Lyons did highlight that a little bit. So that is what we are bringing to the board today for review and approval, so we can make sure that we continue that communications with the Army Corps, that yes, we are still working hard on this project, and it is our intent to see this project to completion. Next slide, please. All right, so I always like to include the information on how you can get involved with the project. Contact us if you have any questions at Water Resources at 707-263-2344. Come say hi to us on the third floor of the courthouse. Um, we are pretty friendly, I think. You can also watch all the previous recordings and check out all the meeting material. We are actively updating the website to make sure that all that material that we discussed in all the previous meetings are there and available for the folks to see. But if you are having trouble finding something, please give us a call, and we can send it directly to you or help you walk through the site. So with that being said, my last slide is the non-federal sponsor letter of intent. So I don't know, um, Chair, I don't know if you want to take questions now or add any input, or?
Yes, I would like to, you know, just state that, uh, one of the, one of the discussions that we have in the Blue Ribbon Committee, and Harry's, Harry's in attendance, quite often with me at that as well, is ideas on how the lake, uh, can become its previous state before, and, um, consistently, we're pointing them in this direction. Um, this is one of the, one of the ideal, um, ideal remedies for the nutrient load. And even when other folks from different agencies, colleges, or whatever, bring different ideas, like, you know, to the, to the Blue Ribbon Committee, um, about the lake's, you know, state, it's always brought up that this can work, this can work, and let's talk about one specific thing. They were talking about, like, an oxygenation type of thing. And the, the bottom line is, is that the nutrient load is always going to still be a problem, regardless of any type of situation that's put into place to try and remedy it, short-term. The long-term is nutrient load. And this, this situation right here, this project, is the prime, um, solution for it. And, uh, yeah, so just wanted to highlight that. I know being a part of this committee is a great thing. I know, just like Supervisor Sabatier brought up, uh, when we first had this presentation given to us by these two gentlemen, um, they looked at us with these, like, these, like, eyes, like, wait, we need you to get involved. And so, you know, Supervisor Sabatier, and I definitely appreciate that, the work that you put in. Um, the presentation, when we met with Congressman Garamendi, was, was, was awesome. That was a really good, it was really good to see these two gentlemen in, in their modes, their mojos. And we seen it today again. So, um, so yes, staff was right on time with it as well, and I just enjoy being a part of this. And hopefully, we can push forward, because like you said, this sunsetting is coming to, uh, to a quick, uh, to a quick timeframe soon. So Supervisor Sabatier, if you wanted to add anything.
I just want to add a few things. Um, one is, we were thanked for the, uh, extension. I just want to clarify that. I think that we need to thank Assemblywoman Aguirre-Curry. Uh, her staff automatically listened to us on our needs and our, um, our worries about the deadline approaching. The actual deadline has already passed, the original one, it was March of 2022. Uh, so that got extended to June of 2023. By the end of June, we need to spend all this money. Um, the deadline is definitely a concern for us, but we're probably going to ask again to see if we can get an extension, just to at least, uh, we, we have to try. And so, uh, at the same time, everything is moving forward. And moving forward is, uh, just want to describe it a little bit more, it's arduous. Uh, the process has been slowed down a whole lot, and, and, uh, I'm not a fan of excuses, but it's more of a state of current affairs. Uh, state workers do not work in the office. They all work from home. And there's times where we're told, nobody can answer you, they'll be back in a week to check their voicemail. Um, and so we've had a lot of struggle in dealing with the state. And the state has to review our appraisals and submit that back to us, saying, yes, we approve the appraisal. Then the state has to approve the sale and actually provide the money to be able to pay for the sale. Um, all, all those things take a long time. I know that we've seen, uh, where we've been approached by Water Resources here in our county, asking to front money to pay for properties, um, in hope that the state will pay us soon. It's taken sometimes up to six months. And so the process at the state level has absolutely helped us be fur, not, has not helped us be further along. It's helped us to be a little bit what we feel is concerning and behind. And so I think those are the types of comments we will be making if we ask for an extension, which I believe we will. Uh, but we're also working really hard. We've had two contractors. Uh, we added one, uh, when we did our environmental, environmental survey assessments. That has to start off the process. And then we had one contractor doing the appraisal, and now we have two. And so continuously, we're attempting to, uh, get the work done that needs to get done, knowing that we have a deadline. Uh, we do appreciate the support that we have, both from the board, all the way up to the federal. Uh, but until, and in our conversations with our federal representatives, until we have all properties acquired, most likely, the Army Corps will not budge and allow us to get the appropriations we need to start this project. So it's important that we finish that one part of the project. So just kind of wanted to add a little bit more of understanding of the length of time it takes to accomplish the goals that we have. And our first goals were actually a little bit more difficult than our latter goals, for the fact that we're looking at properties that have houses, so we can relocate people. And that's a more arduous process than just buying land that's vacant. And that's on the steps that we're taking right now, is on vacant land. So, again, a bit more information.
Not to mention Caltrans, being a part of it, and, uh, you know, uh,
PG&E.
Yeah, PG&E is one of the other ones that we've been working on as well. And so, uh, with the towers running across the midsection of that whole project, um, they're required to be lifted, and so that's a cost and whatnot. And so we've, we've posed numerous questions, and, uh, we're still working on those type of things. And so, um, I can keep going on, I think we all can. Um, but if there's any, any questions from the board, um,
Yeah.
Yes. Supervisor Pyska.
I, I so appreciate the volunteers that have been keeping this going. Um, it's such an important project, and had it not been for so many volunteers dedicating themselves to the process, it could have fallen apart at any time. Um, when I met both of you out there several years ago now, um, with the Army Corps, they mentioned at that time that wetland restoration was not, um, among their high priorities. And now I'm wondering if that has changed, uh, in light of, um, the drought and the need for more water storage in our lake? Um, if any of those perspectives are changing as the properties get acquired? Just wondering about that.
Actually, the, the wetland restoration, it should be, it is stated as a priority. So I don't know why they said that. I, I think they enjoy building locks and dredging harbors more. But the fact is that this is a very important part of it. It's a certain fraction, I don't know if Peter, you remember what the budget was, but there's, there's a certain fraction of money that they need to spend on ecosystem restoration. And it, it's tricky for us, because we see this project as, as a key to improving the water quality in the lake. But that's not their, their trip. Their trip is, uh, restoration, which is good, and, uh, and flood protection. And so I, I'd have to take off my, um, lake clarification hat when I talk to the Army Corps, but they, but, but they shouldn't have said that. Restoration of ecosystems is an important part of the Army Corps' path.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because they made it very clear that day.
Yeah.
That, if I may comment it too, it's a legal requirement. It is in federal law statute, if they undertake a project like this, they must also incorporate, uh, ecosystem restoration as, as part of that. Um, the other thing that I would say is, Congress has passed that, you know, legislation for a vast amount of money, uh, for infrastructure, which covers lots of things. One of our challenges, when we talk about getting money, is to be able to take advantage of that. And that's when you start drifting, not drifting, but getting into this question, well, should the board have, and the county have on the payroll as a consultant, someone in Washington who's a lobbyist, if you will, for the county? Every other big jurisdiction does. Now, maybe you can do that through your League of, of county supervisors, something of that sort. But you need to be at the table. And that's where that table is right now, is in Washington, working with Congressman Thompson's office in order to learn it and be plugged in, because that's where you're looking for the money, for the big money for this project is going to come there. Um, I think that's, oh, one last thing. This project adds to the water storage capacity of Clear Lake. I mean, you mentioned that that whole area is below zero Rumsey. It's 5,900 acre feet of water that gets stored in this, in this area when the lake is full. And that is a significant amount of water. And so, again, keeping that in mind apropos of what you're thinking about, by doing this product, project, we increase water storage, that's an, you know, that can check some boxes, um, for, for, for money. Because after all, we adding to the storage capacity, Yuba will love that downstream, you know? And, uh, so, and there's some interesting water rights issue in that regard, by the way, allocating that 5,900 acre feet between the county and Yuba, and there's been some work done on that. So, long answer to your, your question.
And another quick response is, it has been, uh, prioritized by Congress, I believe it's Congressman Garamendi, who, uh, requested that this be a priority project. We just need to get to that, uh, finish line of acquisition in order to then make those requests, and that priority still exists.
Right. Vice Chair Scott.
Thank you for the presentation. I think all of us up here realize that this is a very important project for, um, everybody here in Lake County. So my question is, approximately, how many holdouts do we have acquiring properties? And when do you think the timeline looks like we will be able to move forward?
That's an aggressive scoop forward, sorry. Um, so with that, we're looking at about, uh, we're dealing with roughly, right now, 29 different, um, parcels and 17 parcel owners. So the phase that we're at right now is, we had a surveyor go out there to look at the project boundary, since the ser, the project boundary is based off the FEMA flood maps. So right now, um, what we are doing is, we're getting that final count, and if we have to make any modifications, for example, if initially the project did state, you know, this is a full acquisition or parcel acquisition, making sure that everything that we have with DWR, we're all on the same page. So those are the properties that we're dealing with now. The numbers outside of that project boundary that, um, Dr. Lyons referred to, I don't have that number off the top of my head. So our focus is to acquire those remaining parcels, the 29 that I mentioned, by the sunsetting of these funds on this current round. Now, keep in mind, not all of those sellers may be willing sellers, especially depending on the differences of the project boundaries based off of the surveys. So again, making sure that we engage in communication with those parcel owners. So figuring out that scope, that's what we're working on now to refinalize that, and prioritizing those that are willing sellers, because again, these funds can only be used for willing sellers.
I, can I comment too? If you know somebody who owns property up there, would you please encourage them to sell it to us? And, and, and there's one, I, I should, is it okay if I mention the Buddhist property? I think I'll do that. The, there's, on the big map, there's a very big blue piece of property down in the lower left-hand corner, and that's owned by the, um, Dharma Realm Buddhist Association. And they're very, very reluctant to, to sell it, uh, even though it's a critical piece for this whole project. So, um, call on your friends in that association to lobby for us, would you please? So, thank you.
Yes, and not to mention, um, the agencies and the willing sellers, those different moving parts. But there's also, you know, I didn't mention this earlier, but I know Harry mentioned the tribes. Uh, that's where I first learned about it, on the tribal council when I was in Robinson Ranch area, was this project was back in the 2000s. And Irene Equidiquit was the EPA director at the time, and she'd bring it forward, and we'd discuss it, and didn't realize it was basically almost in the same state it was back then. So, uh, that's another thing, though, because we do have these stakeholders coming, uh, try, different tribes, and they, they have their concerns. And we also have public concerns that are, that are very, that are very intense, but for, for good reason. And so we, so Water Resources has to manage, not just working with us and doing this work, but also when we're in those meetings, you know, uh, the temperature of those meetings and, and the demands, which are, which are, you know, legitimate demands at times, get quite overwhelming. But, you know, we're going to get through it, and, uh, just wanted to highlight some of that as well. So, yeah. Um, is there any other questions for, uh, committee? And I think we're on the letter of intent, right? And so, uh, I know it's item B, and so, uh, would like to, do you want to bring that up? Do we, we already talked about it enough, or do we need to bring it up and look at it real quick? And, yeah.
It's just a statement of our interest and intent, but it also updates the Army Corps on what we've done in the last year.
Right.
So it's a...
All right. Is there anyone from the public that has any comments or concerns, questions? I know that there's, uh, did you?
I'd like to read it.
Oh, she'd like to. Okay.
It's, it's been attached to our agenda since our agenda came out.
Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to come up and speak on behalf of this item?
And Mr. Chair, she can request a copy of it at the administrative front desk if she'd like to.
Okay. All right, I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers. And I don't see any hands up in the Zoom room, so I'll bring it back to the board, and, uh, we'll move forward with the action on the letter.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the 2022 non-federal sponsor letter of intent and authorize the Lake County Board of Supervisors to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Sabatier, and a second by Supervisor Pyska. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation and for the work you do on this project.
Thank you very much. Thank you.